Good evening, everybody. I've been informed by the town clerk that we indeed have a quorum and we can begin the meeting. So I would ask that everyone who needs to be seated, please be seated. And now I would ask everyone to please rise for the town prayer, or town meeting prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. "O God, we have assembled tonight to exercise this form of governance in which to order our affairs. Let us come together in a spirit of community, recognizing that all of us are different and that there is room for healthy disagreement and constructive communication. Let us consider carefully our civic responsibility, not only to our generation, but to generations to come, so that we can leave to them a town so strong and beautiful as the one that we have enjoyed. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible in liberty and justice for all." Thank you. So my name is Russell Denver. I'm your newly-elected town moderator. At this time, I would like to use the power of the microphone and recognize Jim Shields. Jim was the town moderator for the previous 12 years. And I would like to ask Jim to come forward for a special presentation by Eric Madison, Chair of the Appropriations Committee.
Good evening, folks. As most of you know, Jim has served as our town moderator for four terms totaling 12 years. In that time, he has moderated our town meetings, sometimes through controversial and tenuous issues, with an unmatched degree of professionalism, poise, and dignity. Jim never lost sight of the significance of the town's legislative process and always ensured issues were clearly presented and respectfully debated before they were called to a vote. As residents, it's easy for us to take for granted Jim's dedication to the position, unaware of the work and the preparation that goes into each and every town meeting. Many of you may not be aware, but an added role to the moderator's position is the appointment of residents to the town's appropriation and capital planning committees. I can attest firsthand that this was a responsibility Jim took with great seriousness. He always made these appointments in the best interest of our community, demanding and getting the same level of commitment and ethics that he demanded of himself. Jim, the town of East Long Meadow is deeply indebted to you for your service to our community. On behalf of the Appropriations Committee and the town of East Long Meadow, please accept this plaque as a small token of our appreciation for your service, your guidance, but most importantly, your friendship.
With the passage of the new charter, effective July 1st, various town committees go out of existence, two of which are the Capital Planning Committee and the Appropriations Committee. These individuals are responsible for presenting the budget and the capital plan to town meeting each and every year, and the Appropriations Committee additionally is responsible for overseeing financial transfers throughout the fiscal year. I would ask that members of the Capital Planning Committee and the Appropriations Committee please stand for our recognition. I would now like to recognize the individuals who were recently elected at the past town election. They are Kevin Manley, Board of Selectmen; Bill Fonseca; and Elizabeth Marzian-Boscher, School Committee; John Mayberry, Board of Public Works; Virginia Robbins, Board of Library Trustees; William Johnson, Board of Assessors; and Deborah Bushnell, Planning I now ask the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Paul Federici, to come forward for some special recognition.
It's a historic evening tonight. I'm up here as, I guess, the final chairman of the final Board of Selectmen of East Long Meadow. For 122 years, our town has had town meetings as a form of governance, and after tonight, we'll be embarking on a whole new world, and I think it's going to work great, and I thank the people involved in getting this whole process set up and, you know, ready to go. And remember to vote on June 7th. That's very important to, you know, to get a good board in so we can get a good start. I'm going to be reading the anniversaries and retirements in town, and I can tell you right now that one year ago, we hired a lot of people. So I'm going to start with the one-year anniversaries for the school department. Margaret Anderson; April Arroyo; Donna Bailey; Allison Baylog; Amy Baroso; Shannon Bates; Robert Benoit; Lisa Berrios; Pamela Blair; Rebecca Borgo; Tina Bourgeois; Emily Brock; Paula Burke; Michael Craig; Lindsay Desatelle; Ashley Fleming; Joshua Florence; Jane Forney; Andrew Giambrogn; Matthew Hegarty; Mariah Lapparoff; Brandon Madden; Tia Mazza; Laura Moyer; Lauren Parsavand; Carol Popovich; Donna Porth; Donna O'Connor; Rhonda Richard; Jessica Roy; Amy Starks; Ann Zito; firefighters, Call Firefighter David Terrell; Call Firefighter Michael Sedlak; Police Officer Michael Calcasola; Officer Michael Healy; Melissa Thebers, Clerk, Library; and Justin Stacy, the IT Department. Five years under the schools. David Axelrod; Elizabeth Bartlett; Catherine Borick; Heather Brown; Sheila Camiso; Eileen Driscoll; Jeffrey Dunn; Donna Faccini; Gina Flanagan; David Gladden; Daniel Kelleher; Jamie Lloyd; Jennifer Macarini; Richard Maurer; Lori Napolitano; Rachel Sumakis; Rhonda Theroux; Jeffrey Zilch; and Career Firefighter Michael Minahan; Call Firefighter Charlie Kenjemi; Call Firefighter Dennis Donahue; Officer Timothy Driscoll, Police Department; Officer Mike Ingalls; Officer James Gagnon; David Doc Ericksberg of the IT Department; Thomas O'Connor, Animal Control Officer/Inspector; and Melissa Dafino-Lagacy, Alternate Animal Control Officer/Inspector. Ten years, schools. Lisa Camerata; Kimberly Camer; Eleanor Covey; Susan Crowley; Marcia Devonich-Dublock; Charlene Ferguson; Dorita Henderson; Stacy Humphreys; Carrie Jackson; Elizabeth LaFountain; Jean Marker; Dorothy Mastriani; Daniel Myers; Erica Nissenbaum; Marilyn Robishoud; Elaine Santinello; Amy Simmons; Jason Sinarkuk; John Weidersheim; and Career Firefighter Lieutenant Christopher Beecher; Career Fighter/Firefighter Lieutenant Brian DePondi; and Call Firefighter Lieutenant Dan Fazio. Fifteen years for schools. Rebecca Ayala; Megan Bargati; Joanne Brown; James Connolly; Nora Kooch; Timothy Gary; Deena Hool; Margaret Huba; Harriet Kulig; Charlene LaChapelle; Daniel Maurer; Teresa Mulligan; Donna Perkins; Mary Quick; Barbara Sandman; Megan Soprannick; Teresa Tober; Heather Tamala; and Officer Tim Daly. Twenty years under schools. Louise Disa; Deborah Foley; Barbara Galanick; Barbara Hill; Wendy Hogan; William Knowlton; Richard Malerba; Lorraine Malone; Teresa Moriarty; Melissa Poirier; Victoria Ratte; Paula Trangizzi; Angela Trail; Carol Walder; and in the Selectmen's Office, Lorraine Bonsbocci. Twenty-five years. Officer Scott Sela-- Scala, I'm sorry, Officer Edward Rice, John Morrissey School Department. Thirty years. Police Chief Jeffrey DeLassio; Marilyn Burke School Department; Julia Kraus School Department. Thirty-five years. Call Firefighter Captain David Villamano. And forty years, Barbara Langford School Department. Let's thank all these people for their service to our town. Now the retirements, which are for the period May 15th, 2015 through May 16th, 2016. Deputy Fire Chief Sean Minahan, thirty years, six months. Anthony Gentile, Call Firefighter, nineteen years, six months. Police Chief Douglas Melis, eleven years. Officer John LaQuary, twenty-seven years. Kathy Shaw, Assessors, twenty-two years. Franklin Morandi, DPW, thirty-seven years. John Collins, DPW, thirty-five years. Kathleen Goodchild, Library, twenty-eight years. Susan Peterson, Library Director, twelve years. In the schools. Marilyn Burke, thirty years. Eleanor Covey, ten years. Carol Casper, sixteen years. Ursula O'Donnell, thirty-three years. John Sessler, four years. Andrew Wilson, sixteen years. And Karen Wright, seventeen years. And let's congratulate these people for their service and their retirement. And before I go any further, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, as you noticed, there's only two selectmen up here. I just wanted to have you keep Selectman Gorman's family in your thoughts. I know he, there was an issue with, I believe it's his mother-in-law who has been sick, and she was rushed to the hospital today, which is why he's not here today. He's by his wife's side, so I just want to let you know that. Thank you, Paul. I now ask that Carl Olin and Ryan Quimby from the Fourth of July Parade Committee to come forward for a special announcement.
My name is Carl Olin and I'm a member of the Parade Committee. I would like to introduce Mr. Ryan Quimby, who is the chairman of the Parade Committee. Ryan has been a diligent resource for the parade and through his leadership, has been instrumental in the parade continuing to being a part of East Long Meadow's Fourth of July activities.
Our purpose tonight is to introduce the Grand Marshal of our 2016 parade, but before doing so, on behalf of the Parade Committee, we would like to express our appreciation to the entire community of East Long Meadow for your continued support of the parade, as without your assistance, the parade would not be the success that it is. This is the eighteenth year we have chosen a Grand Marshal, and the selection committee is comprised of past Grand Marshals.
The selection, excuse me, the selection is based on some of the following considerations. It is someone who has participated in town events, has served on town committees, has volunteered for various activities, and has been an active member of a civic group, a service organization, or a youth group, et cetera. Also, through a business or a religious affiliation, has worked to better the town and overall has continued to contribute to improve the quality of life in East Long Meadow and the local area. As the list of Grand Marshals is read, you may recognize some of their names. Unfortunately, some are no longer with us, but the legacy of all the Grand Marshals is the same. They loved East Long Meadow and through their efforts, made it a great place to live. Past Grand Marshals of the Fourth of July Parade have been Marshall Hansen; Joe Scanlon; Richard Clark; Baba Trangizzi; Willie Ferrero; Chandler Newell; Jim Connor; Mike Boucher; Merle Safford; Bob Hildreth; Sue Grimaldi; Marilyn Richards; Dan Lacedonia; Lloyd Oaks; Jim Rintul; Jim Davis; and Ned Obenesser. Before Ryan introduces this year's Grand Marshal, on my part, it has been an honor and a privilege, over the years, to have had the opportunity to introduce all the past Grand Marshals, as they have been outstanding citizens of our community. We thank them. Mr. Quimby?
Our 2016 Fourth of July Parade Grand Marshal has been a town resident since 1942, graduated from Springfield College in 1961, then entered the Army as a commissioned officer, and opened a local business in 1969 that is successful to this day. He has held memberships in the East Long Meadow Long Meadow Chamber of Commerce, the East of the River Chamber of Commerce, the Galaxy Community Council at Westover Air Force Base, and the East Long Meadow J.C.'s where he had the seat of Vice President. He has also sponsored the Hammond County 4-H Fair since 1978. He has helped our parade by donating tractors or utility vehicles, as well as donating to National Night Out, Heritage Park, Plowing and Emergencies, and providing maintenance and manpower for the Long Meadow Girls of Crossfield. Municipally, he has helped our town on the Capital Committee since 2000, was on the Government Review Committee in 2001, on the previous Charter Commission in 2004 and 2005, was the first founder of the North Cross House, and most recently volunteered his time on the Chief of Police Search Committee. On top of being recognized as our 2016 East Long Meadow Fourth of July Parade Grand Marshal, he has also been recognized in 2014 by receiving the Lions Club Distinguished Citizens Award for Community Service, as well as the East Long Meadow Rotary Club Paul Harris Fellow Award for Outstanding Community Service. Mr. Olin, if you can please introduce our 2016 Fourth of July Parade Grand Marshal?
In appreciation for all you have done for the town of East Long Meadow, we'd like to introduce our Grand Marshal, Mr. Connie Wiswicky.
This is just a great, great moment. Well, East Long Meadow is making history tonight. We're moving forward. The bad times are behind us, and we're going to grow, just like we should. Thank you very much.
So before we get started, just a couple of housekeeping measures. Please silence your cellphones, and note the exits in front and to the rear of the building, in case that there is a fire alarm. Please peacefully and quietly exit through those fire exits. Voters must have a white tag to be able to vote. Non-voters should have a red tag. And in the event that we have to have a teller vote, the back doors will be secured. And lastly, let's show some respect for all the speakers. Finding that we do have a quorum, now I'd like to proceed to Article One. Article One is reports of town committees and officers. Do I hear a motion to accept?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, it passes. Article Two, Eric Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $52,909,516 for the town purposes and charges in anticipation of revenue for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2016, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and all its acts and amendments thereof, and including in addition thereto, Chapter 849 of the Acts of 1969, as amended for the operation of the town departments as contained in the Town of East Long Meadow operating budget as printed in a chart with this warrant entitled Exhibit A: Operating Budgets Fiscal Year 2017. And folks, I do have a, oh, wait for a second.
Do I hear a second?
Folks, I do have a quick typo amendment for you. I'll throw out there now, as the moderator does not read these numbers. And on Exhibit A, about halfway down through the page, under Administration and Finance, line 135, Town Accountant. Under the heading of Personal Services, it reads $219,092. That should read $241,667. The next line down, 141, Board of Assessors. Under the heading of Operating Expenses, it reads $78,850. It should read $81,350. The totals to the right, under the FY 2017 Recommended, are correct as printed. Folks, I'm going to present for you tonight the FY 2017 Budget Recommendations of the Appropriations Committee. Now, as I go through this, you will note that there are some things in this budget that have appeared every year. When this budget was done by the Appropriations Committee and had to be ready for print, we had not yet gone to vote on the new charter. Now that the new charter has passed, there is lines in there that might not make too much sense to you. For example, why do we have a Board of Selectmen's line when in fact, we will not have a Board of Selectmen? So there are going to be some adjustments that the council will have to make as they start up the new form of government and they go through it. This will, however, give ample starting point and appropriate the budgets for the town departments to operate for the next fiscal year. So I'm going to start with the committee members, who the town moderator mentioned earlier, besides myself. Jim Broderick, to my right, Jim is our senior member, serving, I don't know how many years, Jim, many years on the committee. Russ Denver, our new moderator, served on the committee for eight or nine years. Rocco Carabetta, Jim Walsh. Dawn Wiswicky-Starks. Sam Pisnelli, and not with us tonight, she's out on maternity leave, is our town accountant, Sarah Menard. And certainly, the glue that keeps us operating smoothly, Marge LaRaca, who is our recording So the fiscal year budget approach this year was not unlike last year, where much of our concern, much of the Appropriations Committee concern, you've all heard me say this before, is our ever-increasing tax rate. Under the constraints of Proposition 2.5, we cannot charge more than $25 per 1,000 valuation on a home. That's where it stops. Our current tax rate is $21.12. The Appropriations Committee projects that if we were to tax to the full levy capacity each year, we would cap out, unless there's a significant change in property values, but we would cap out in 2020 or 2021, in between the two. We would meet that $25 per 1,000 cap. When that occurs, our ability to raise additional revenues has stopped. That's as far as we can go under the constraints of Proposition 2.5. So we approach this year's budget, as we did last year's budget, with an eye on a very conservative, presenting a very conservative budget, minimizing the impact to the tax rate. What we're hoping for is through a series of years, by being able to minimize the tax rate increase, that eventually, property values will recover, causing the property, the tax rate to decline, and bring us significantly lower than the $25 per 1,000 cap. So with that said, what we are proposing to you tonight is raising through real estate and personal property taxes $39,285,346. Local receipts, local receipts are derived from permits and fees and things that get paid into the town, of $3,420,400. We've used the governor's numbers in our state aid. As you know, the legislature has yet to establish the state budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So we really don't exactly know what the amount of local aid is going to be to the cities and towns. Based on what we're seeing, both out of the House and the Senate, we don't anticipate it to be much different, if any different, than that of the governor's numbers. MSBA reimbursements, that's the money we get back from the state. We're still paying on Burchland Park School. That's their share of the payments for this upcoming fiscal year. And other miscellaneous transfers that come in from various revolving funds and so on, for total revenues of $55,184,827. Now, under the expenses, you will find these expenses, they're grouped, and you'll find them on Exhibit A in your handout. So I'm just going to give you the total of each group. If you're interested in what that group entails, it is listed out for you in Exhibit A. So under the heading of Administration and Finance, $2,307,63. Insurance, Taxes and Reserve Fund, $1,223,930. Debt Services, Debt Services is paying back the money we borrowed over the years, $2,771,166. Public Works, which, I'll make a note here, the Public Works budget includes the utility costs for all the town buildings, all the municipal buildings, $3,927,708. Under Health and Human Services, $1,461,656. Library and Recreation, $838,666. Planning, Zoning and Conservation, $148,223. And Employees' Benefits, $7,903,542. These last two items under our expenses, you can find on Exhibit C, I'm sorry, Exhibit B, the right-hand side of the column. They are the capital projects and various warrant articles that you will be asked to consider tonight, $1,324,723. Real Estate Abatement, Community Preservation and State Charges, $950,588, for total uses of $55,184,827, which represents only a 1.71% increase over last year's budget. So what does this proposed budget do? It enhances fire protection by increasing the hours of the full-time coverage on the fire department. This is the second year of a two-year phase-in to increase the hours of full-time coverage on the fire department. It funds a human resources department, an equivalent of one and one-half full-time equivalent. It funds a new school position. It maintains a healthy level of reserves, with about seven, seven and a quarter percent in reserves. Uses no free cash at all, none of our savings, to balance our annual costs. And it continues to contribute to the town's other post-employment benefit liabilities. One other item that it does, that I didn't include on this slide, it does include one additional full-time equivalent for the accounting office, and I, for some reason, didn't put that on that slide. What the budget, proposed budget, does not do, it does not use the full levy capacity, leaving over $1,160,000 in unused levy capacity. This will save the taxpayers approximately 50% of the potential increases to our tax rate allowed under Proposition 2.5. So the potential rate, if we full, if we use the full levy capacity, would be $22.25, or $1.13 per 1,000 increase. Under the proposed budget, the tax rate would go up to $21.68. Under the proposed budget, the tax rate would go up to $21.68, just a 56 cent per 1,000 So it's worth noting, just a few budget challenges that are going to be facing the new town council as we move forward. The liability for other post-employment benefits is enormous and will have to be addressed. Currently, the last study that was done, our OPEB liabilities, it was estimated in June of 2015, at $25.5 million. We currently have about $1.1 million that we've been putting away slowly at each of these annual town meetings, toward that liability. The tax rate, as I've discussed earlier, inching ever so closely to that $25 per 1,000 cap. The capital needs of the community, the demand for services, and the unfunded mandates that are exceeding our ability to raise funds. That is my presentation of the budget. I will be glad to answer any questions as they come up after the moderator finishes with his portion. I do just want to throw out to the residents that the Appropriations Committee, thanks all the residents for the many years of support and the trust that you've put in us each year when we present the annual budget to you. Thank you very much.
So the way we will go through the town budget is I will read each department, each line item, and the total. If there's a question, I would like you to yell out "question," and we will mark that, and we will come back to that. We will then take all the line items where there has not been a question and vote on that, and then we will go back and talk about each question item. So, please excuse me, this might take a little bit. Under Education, line item 300, $28,557,76. Line item 399, School Committee, $4,200, for a total of $28,561,276. Employee Benefits, line item 914, Health Insurance, $5,186,968. Line item 946, Retirement Assessment, $2,716,574. Under Principal Payments, line item 710, General Fund Principal, $2,129,000. Line item 710, Community Preservation Principal, $84,000. Under Interest Payments, line item 751, General Fund Interest, $508,211. Line item 751, Community Preservation Interest, $49,955. Line item 751, Community Preservation Ban, nothing. Public Works, Administration and Highway, $1,738,899. Line item 422, Building Maintenance, $835,750. Line item 423, Snow and Ice, $148,172. Line item 429, Utilities, Gas, Electric and Oil, $1,138,000. Line item 433, Waste Collections, $66,887. Under Public Safety, Emergency Preparedness, $2,700,111. Under Police, line item 210, $881,363. Oh, thank you. Police, line item 210, thank you. 199, line item zero. Public Safety Police, line item 210, $2,700,111. Fire, line item 220, $881,363. Inspectors, line item 241, $184,813. Under Administration and Finance, line item 114, Town Moderator, $575. Line item 122, Board of Selectmen, $262,969. Line item to-be-determined, Human Resources, $232,822. Line item 131, Appropriations Committee, $7,570. Line item 135, Town Accountant, $282,024. Line item 141, Board of Assessors, $278,167. Line item 145, Treasurer, Clerk, Collector, $412,400. Line item 151, Legal, $99,300. Line item 155, Information Technology, $695,001. Line item 160, Elections and Registration, $36,235. Line item 292, Animal Control, zero. Line item 430, Trash Collection, $904,000. Line item 519, Board of Health, $166,126. Line item 541, Council on Aging, $286,123. Line item 543, Veterans, $105,407. Line item 610, Under Library, Recreation and Culture, Library, $666,307. Line item 630, Recreation, $172,359. Celebrations, line item 693, zero. Under Insurance Taxes and Reserve Fund, line item 132, Reserve Fund, $225,000. Line item 910, Payroll Tax, $460,589. Line item 912, Workers' Compensation, $226,241. Line item 945, Liability Insurance, $312,100. Under Planning, Zoning and Conservation, line item 175, Planning Board, Conservation and Zoning, $145,806. Line item 947, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Assessment, $2,417, for a general fund total of $52,909,516. So, I have checked questions under Emergency Preparedness, line item 199. Human Resources with a line item to-be-determined. Board of Health, line item 519. So regarding the passage of the remainder of the budget that is not questioned, I'd like to get a motion for adopting the town budget. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
That passes. I now would like to go back to the three questioned. If you have a question, it's under Emergency Preparedness, line item 199, and there's a zero number in there. Whoever had the question, please come forward to the microphone. Please state your name and your address.
My name is William Prime, my address is 324 Maple Street. I'm just kind of curious why we thought it was important for have emergency preparedness funds last year to the tune of $5,000, and this year, we don't want to have any emergency preparedness.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, I can probably answer two or three of these questions that came up with one answer. We do have emergency preparedness. We did some consolidating of the budget, actually, the Board of Selectmen did some consolidating of departments for management purposes, that consolidated some budgets. So if you look on the line of Board of Health, if you look way over to the right-hand column, you will see there's an increase of 34.4% in that budget. That's because we consolidated into Board of Health, Animal Control, and Emergency Management. So both of those that show zero on Exhibit A are in fact, part of the Board of Health budget now.
Makes sense, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask for a motion to adopt this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And this passes. The second one was line item to-be-determined, Human Resources. Individual had the question, please step forward, state your name and your address, please.
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. As far as I know, we haven't created a Human Resource Department yet, so how can we have a budget with one and a half people in it until we actually create one?
Mr. Madison?
So actually, it's just the opposite, we can't create one until we have money to pay them. So we have to appropriate the money to create one.
And as far as the creation of one that will be done in the future then, by the town council?
Actually, it would likely fall under the town manager's responsibilities, but yes, it will be under his purview to establish the, and if the charter hadn't passed, it would be under the Board of Selectmen's responsibility to establish the Human Resources Department.
I mean, the reason I'm bringing this up is I know in the past, we've asked for a Human Resource Consultant, and that was voted down at town meeting, so I was under the understanding that it was being brought to the town meeting as a warrant, if the town wanted to create a Human Resource Department.
Well, it was presented before the Appropriations Committee, along with the whole presentation, the Appropriations Committee supported it. In fact, we have supported the establishment of a Human Resources Department for some time. We don't believe it's really in the town's best interest to run a 52, or actually, a $55 million industry with 700 and some odd employees and no Human Resources Department.
I absolutely agree with that. Like I said, I'm just looking at the process and how it's being done, and just trying to understand, knowing that in the past, it's come in front of the town meeting first. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question concerning the amount of the Personnel Services within that budget.
Excuse me, could you state your name and your address, please?
I'm sorry, Christine Sonier, 26 Deer Run Terrace. The amount that is requested is $194,272, and the Chair of the Appropriations said this was for one and a half people. However, I'm questioning if perhaps the Benefits Administrator has been also consolidated into the salary, and if so, that would make it more understandable.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I neglected to say that, the Benefits Administrator would be melded into the Human Resources Department, yes.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'd like to motion to accept this proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
This passes. The next is line item 519, Board of Health. Individual had the question, please step forward.
I'll have to answer it, thank you.
Okay. So there being no questions, I'd like to have a motion to adopt this line item. Do I hear a motion?
Aye.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And this item passes. We can now move on to Article 3. Mr. O'Connor?
My name is Tom O'Connor, and I'm the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee for this year 2017. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate, transfer and reappropriate and borrow for capital projects for 2017 fiscal year, a total sum of $1,765,473, for the purposes and in the amounts set forth in the chart published with the warrant entitled Table 1, Fiscal Year 2017 Proposed Capital Projects, as recommended by the Capital Planning Committee as follows. To raise and appropriate for general fund capital projects, the amount of $1,82,223, to be bonded and paid from the Water Enterprise Fund, $554,250, and from the Water Enterprise Fund Vehicle Replacement Reserve, $13,000. From the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $100,000, and from the Sewer Enterprise Fund Vehicle Good evening. Once again, my name is Tom O'Connor, I'm the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, and I'd like to take a moment to introduce our committee of hard-working volunteers over this past year, who have served for many, many years, in a lot of the cases. Our committee is tasked with reviewing projects sponsored by town boards that cost at least $20,000 and have a useful life of over three years or more. Our committee has met on a regular basis since September of 2015. We have met with town boards, department heads, and completed research to assist us in gathering information used in developing the following 2017 fiscal year capital recommendations. Once we completed our recommendations, it was presented to the Appropriations Committee for their approval, and lastly, here at the annual town meeting, for the approval of you, the voters. Over the past year, we reviewed 33 projects totaling $13,537,669. The objectives were to, that we use, were to evaluate each project for urgency, need, and benefit to the community. Prioritize all the projects submitted based upon the outcome of valuation with highest Assign available funds to highest priorities. Work with departments to close completed projects, availing unspent funds for new projects. Work with Appropriations Committee to establish a budget for new spending. Recommend projects and funding at the annual town meeting. After an extensive review of proposed projects, each is placed into one of the following categories. Public Safety, Government Mandate, Capital Infrastructure Maintenance, Improved Operations, Energy Efficiency, Quality of Life, New Operations. This year, the committee placed emphasis on maintaining current infrastructure. This year, the committee placed emphasis on maintaining current infrastructure, programs, and assets based upon need, urgency, and benefit. The highest priority projects matched to available and appropriate funding sources was done. The funding sources: general funds raised from taxation, including debt payments; water enterprise fund, revenue generated from residents paying their water bills; sewer enterprise fund, revenue generated from residents paying the sewer bills. I'm going to put up on the screen the recommended projects for FY 2017. It's broken into several slides. It was kind of large. And if you shrunk it down too much, you wouldn't be able to read it. You can also follow along in your warrant. I'll go through them briefly. The highest priority was assigned to Phase 2 Closure Summers Road landfill in the amount of $89,100. DPW Equipment, Carl Field Mower, model 31599, in the amount of $109,000. Eastlaw Metal Public School, Burtland Park, domestic boiler replacement, in the amount of $26,000. IT Technology Maintenance Infrastructure, $329,241. DPW Town Hall Sprinkler System. DPW Town Hall Year 2 Renovations, ADA bathrooms included. Police Cruiser, Board of Selectmen had reduced this to one. That was a question someone had asked in the past. Police Taser, $28,900. District School Bus, handicapped accessible bus used to transport some of our ADA children, $90,000. Mountain View Bathroom Renovation Project, in the amount of $67,000. Truck 2 Replacement, DPW. Highway, this vehicle is used between all three departments. And years ago, there was an agreement to split the cost. 50% comes out of the general fund. That's when the majority of the work is completed using that vehicle. And the additional work, the additional money was taken out of the Water Sewer Fund to pay for that. Chestnut and Shaker Intersection Traffic Control Equipment Replacement, $35,000. Admin Number 1 Ford Escape. Again, the same principle applied, 50% for highway and the other 50% of the, in this case, the Water Sewer Fund. The Water Sewer Fund projects that were submitted to us: inflow and infiltration sewer rehabilitation, $100,000. Fern Glen Road Water Main Replacement, $74,250. This was an item that they were going to bond. Maple Shade Avenue Water Main Replacement, $480,000. Again, this was DPW water to be bonded. Total recommendations: general fund projects told $1,82,233. Sewer Fund projects, $116,000. Water Fund projects, $567,250. For total capital recommendations of $1,765,473. The recommended funding sources for those projects: general fund raised and appropriate, Free cash, zero. Total general fund, $1,82,233. Sewer Fund, Sewer Fund Enterprise Fund, $100,000. Truck 2 Replacement, 50%, $16,000. Total Sewer Fund, $116,000. Water Fund, Water Enterprise Fund, $554,250. Admin 1 Ford Escape, $13,000. Total Water Fund, $567,250. That's the end of the presentation. And once again, like the Chair of Appropriations, I'll be around if you have any questions.
So the article has been seconded. Is there any discussion, any questions for Mr. O'Connor? Please come to the microphone. State your name and your address, please.
Jim Barthamas, 95, Wind Farms Drive. On your Table 1, Town Hall Two Office Renovations, says 125,427. On the back page of the warrant, it says 155,423. So I just want to make sure we work out the right numbers here. Is 125 the right number, or is it 155 that's on the back page of the warrant? When you look at the back page, it's about two-thirds of the way down.
That's the five-year capital plan you're referring to?
Yes.
That's not one that's under consideration today? That's on the five-year plan?
Totally different? It's different. Okay. All right. The other question I just had quickly about the Chestnut and Shaker intersection.
Yes.
I know there's a gas station going in on the corner there. Are they paying for any of this? Or is this, are we taking care of all of it?
To my knowledge, that project's on hold, but the DPW is aware of it. And they're moving ahead with some of the changes that they've requested of us so far.
Okay. And then just last question on Maple Shade Water Replacement. Which part of Maple Shade are we talking about? The entire section of Maple Shade, as you know? We just resurfaced that street on Maple Shade, part of it, last year. So what part of that is being replaced? Hopefully, we're not going to dig up the new portion. Thank you.
That would be North Main Street to Elm Street.
Mr. Page?
Ralph Page. Tom, just to correct you, the gas station on Chestnut and Shaker is going through. I guess my question is, is the $25,000 that the gas station has given to the town, is that in addition to the $35,000? So the renovations would be $60,000?
That is correct. So the 35 plus the 25 is what it's going to take to get that intersection done.
If there are no other questions, I'd like to entertain a vote. All in favor of the Capital Planning Committee motion, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. This article passes. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town...
Kevin, one moment. So I just want to declare, so this required a two-thirds vote. Obviously, with the voice vote, it passed. So we can go on to Article 4.
I move the town to vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 to be added to the stabilization fund account for the purposes of setting aside funds for future expenditure.
Motion? Oh, you got to get this. All set? Do you want to discuss the article? Okay.
I mean, it's pretty simple. We're making a motion to put $100,000 into the stabilization fund. It's like the rainy day fund or reserve fund, so you have it if we need it.
Okay, this also requires a two-thirds vote. So if there's no other further discussion or questions, I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. This passes. Article 5.
I move the town to vote to raise and appropriate $75,000 to be added to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust.
Do I hear a second? Mr. Manley, do you want to discuss this article?
This is actually... Mr. Madison had mentioned it earlier. We're just actually trying to put some money aside for post-employment benefits that are an unfunded liability right now for the town. I think it was a million that was in there last year. 1.1 million currently in there. And so we're just trying to continue to fund that in order to save some of the unfunded liability for the town.
Do we have any questions on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, please say nay. This article passes. Article 6.
Article 6. I move the town vote to transfer $21,496 from available funds in the Treasury to pay outstanding bills incurred in prior year for DW 411-000-545000, DW Custodial Supplies. This article, I know Mr. Madison offered to explain it, but what sometimes happens, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is at the end of a fiscal year, there'll be a service that was provided to the town or something bought by the town that's not billed at that time. And it's not... The bill doesn't come through till a future year, and because the year is closed, we actually have to ask permission to pay it if it falls into a future year. No? Okay. I tried.
Actually, this one is a very unusual circumstance. At the end of a fiscal year, sometimes departments encumber money. In other words, they tell the accounting office, "We have spent this money, but we haven't received the items yet." Don't pay the invoice till we receive the items. When it crosses fiscal year, as they call that, encumbering. So the school department came forward for custodial supplies, encumbered the money. The accounting office, what they thought was encumbered the money in their accounting software. Due to a software glitch, those bills actually got paid out of the current fiscal year's account. You can't do that. It's illegal to pay the bills out of the current fiscal year's account. The money that was supposed to be encumbered got returned to the free, what we call free cash, available funds in the Treasury. What this article does is it takes the money out of free cash, puts it back in last fiscal year's budget, so those bills can then be charged to last fiscal year's budget, and this year's will be whole. I hope I explained that. Very unusual. Incidentally, that glitch in the software has been fixed.
So the motion has been seconded. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Although this requires a four-fifths majority vote. So all those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, please say nay. This passes. Article 7.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Burek, Chairman of the DPW. I move the town vote to appropriate $2,486,573 to the Water Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2017, as printed in the warrant in Article 7.
Mr. Burek?
Since forming the Water Enterprise Fund at the request of the town auditor, this is our second budget, and none of the funds come from the general fund. All direct costs are attributed to, or come from, the enterprise fund. All employees' costs, such as wages, insurance, vacation, retirement, are included in the appropriation. In April of this year, we had a rate-setting hearing, and due to the increase in water costs, we had to... Voted a increase in the water rate from $295 per 100 cubic feet to $3.05 per 100 cubic feet. And this would give us an estimated surplus for this year, which is shown in the article, This article is recommended by the Appropriations Committee.
Any discussion or questions for Mr. Burek? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, please say nay. This article passes. Article 8.
I move the town vote to appropriate $1,953,746 to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2017, as printed in the warrant in Article Number 8.
All set?
Again, this is very similar to the Sewer Fund. No funds and direct costs come from the general fund. All employees' costs are included in the article. However, at the rate-setting hearing that we held in April, we held the water, the sewer rate at $4.80 per 100 cubic feet. And we had a large increase in the rate for treating sewage. But over the last several years, the town has appropriated, as we did again this year, $100,000 for INI, which is inflow and infiltration. And basically, what that is, is that sewer lines, over time, develop seals that fail, and water, groundwater just infiltrates the sewer system, which is just clear groundwater that can flow into Bondi, it goes right to Bondi's Island for treatment. Over the years, this money that we've appropriated at town meeting, we've used to run cameras down the sewer lines, find these leaks, and repair them. So this year, with a surplus fund that we have in the account, we are appropriating $263,879 that will be used to balance this year's budget. So again, this is... Article is recommended by the Appropriations Committee.
Any questions or concerns? Please step forward. One moment.
Kelly Deckin, Charade Avenue. Could you just...
Kelly, one moment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The were saving or... The sewer one? Oh, okay.
That was my question.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, John. Any questions, concerns? This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, please say nay. This article passes. Article 9. Article 9. I move the town to vote to reauthorize revolving funds for various town departments appropriate pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E1/2 for fiscal year 2017, as printed in Article 9 of the warrant. Fifty-three E., one-half, for fiscal year 2017, as printed in Article Nine of the warrant. As many of you recurring visitors to these town meetings may remember, and for those of you who don't, we have certain departments who receive monies that are not in the normal taxation process of the town, and in order to handle that, we set up revolving funds so they can receive these funds and use them as they deem necessary. And in this case, just to give you an idea, this particular warrant item has to do with four departments: local cable access, solid waste disposal, council on aging, and public library. And to give you another example, local cable access gets money from Charter, from, there's a little tiny fee on your cable bill every month that goes towards local access television, and that goes back to the town specifically for local access television use. And also, the school department pays for instruction, they also pay to local cable, Elcat, for instruction. The solid waste disposal, the sale of the trash bags, and the recycling rebates go into this fund there. Council on Aging has donations, memorials, and federal and state grants that go into this fund. And Public Library has overdue fees. So, these are the, these revolving funds have to be set up to handle these non-tax items, so that these various departments can turn around and use them. Thank you, Paul. So, this article has been seconded. Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. This article passes. Article Ten. Article Ten. I move the town vote to authorize the establishment of a revolving fund for the Health Department pursuant to the authority granted it under provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E., one-half, for fiscal year 2017, as printed in Article Ten of the warrant. Once again, under the Health Department, we have a situation where our trash company, Republic Waste, gives money back to the town on an annual basis for various, for various community uses, scholarships. We use it when we have our hazardous waste day to pay our share of the fee for that. And in this case, they, to start this off, this revolving fund, they've given us two thousand dollars to start a Sharps program, which is the disposal of needles and, you know, for diabetics and et cetera, whoever uses a needle. You don't want to throw those away in the trash, you want to dispose of them properly. And this allows us to start a program where they can be disposed of, I believe, at Town Hall, if I correct?
Be decided.
What's that?
Sorry, they're never going to be decided.
Okay, we're going to, we will decide where they're going to be brought, but they will be able to be disposed of in a proper manner. So, once again, in order to do this, we have to set up a revolving fund for the Health Department, and that's the purpose of this motion. So, this article has been seconded. Any questions or concerns, discussion? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
This article passes. Article Eleven. Article Eleven. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to be used to fund the Fourth of July, 2017, Independence Day Parade. I always ask to do this, this particular motion every year, because this is a subject near and dear to my heart. I love the parade, I've been active in it for, God, Carl, fifteen, twenty years, something like that, in one form or another. The parade, I say it every year, it's a jewel in our, in our community, it brings people in from all over. It's widely publicized, it's beloved by tens of thousands of people. And I realize appropriations being fiscally responsible doesn't necessarily agree with this spending, but sometimes you have to go with your heart and not necessarily just your wallet, so that's the purpose of this motion. So, this article has been seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
This article passes.
I'm George Kingston, Chair of Community Preservation Committee. I move the town vote to accept the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee and appropriate from Community Preservation Fund Reserve for fiscal year 2017, from the revenues estimated to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for the purpose and the amounts as follows: five percent for administrative expenses, ten percent for historic resource reserve, ten percent for community housing reserve, ten percent for open space reserve, sixty-five percent for the Undesignated General Reserve, and that the town transfer from the Undesignated General Reserve to the town's General Fund to reimburse the town for the following: one, the pool bond payment of principal and interest of sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and two, the brown property payment of principal and interest of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is our annual housekeeping article for community preservation, required under state law to distribute the funds, at least ten percent to each of the three main reserves, and the rest to the General Reserve of the Community Preservation. I should note that we did not have any requests for community preservation funds to come before this town meeting today. So, we are, and the actual estimated amount is probably going to be closer to three hundred thousand dollars. The problem is, we don't know how much state match we're going to get until September. So, we're being conservative in our estimate here by saying two fifty.
So, this article has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Kingston? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. This article passes. Article Thirteen. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate fifty thousand dollars to fund the compensated This compensated absences account was established at the fall town meeting, and what its purpose is, is to separately state the sick pay and vacation pay for each department, and have it sort of segregated, so there's an idea of what's due in that regard on an annual basis. So, this article has been seconded. Any questions on this article? Hearing none. This requires a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
This article passes.
Article Fourteen, there'll be no action. Would follow this.
There being no action, go to Article Fifteen.
I move the town to authorize Board of Selectmen to convey a parcel of land owned by the town, containing one point one acres, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one square feet of land, more or less, which is part of a parcel identified as one sixty to one seventy Summers Road. Assessor parcel number thirty-nine dash fourteen dash zero, for no monetary consideration, but in exchange for a parcel of land containing one point one acre of land, more or less, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one square feet, which is part of a parcel of land identified as one twenty-four KB Road. Assessor parcel number fifty-one, two, dash two, dash one, owned by Donald R. Soja and Jennifer M. Soja. And both parcels to be transferred are shown on a plan of land prepared by Smith Associates Surveyors Incorporated, dated three sixteen sixteen, entitled Plan of Land KB Road, East Long Meadow, Mass., owned by Donald R. and Jennifer M. Soja, and are identified on said Basically, what this does is we're, the town is actually getting an agreement to make an even swap of one point one acre of land with a homeowner, and they're going to take one point one acre of our land. This is an actual sort of funny piece of property that is a triangle. By us, the town, taking the one point one acre of land, it gives us a contiguous piece of property, it also gives the homeowners the same thing, and there's no, it costs us no money, so it works out for everybody, in their best interest of everybody. Anything else, Bobby, you think?
So, this motion has been seconded. Is there any questions? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds majority approval. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. This article passes. Article Sixteen is a citizen petition. Would the petitioner please come forward?
Good evening, my name's Pepino Ayalo. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take in fee simple pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter Seventy-nine, or otherwise acquire, as a townway, waterman av, running northwest from Dale Street to Birch Ave, for the distance of approximately four hundred and seventy feet, and that no damages be awarded to said
All set?
John Mayberry, Board of Public Works. Just want to explain this for this gentleman, it's a piece of waterman between two sections of street that we're just doing some housekeeping to clean up. It is an approved street, so the petitioner is bringing forward what normally would come forward if a developer had done a new street, but this street was just like, kind of lost in space, if you will, and it's now being cleaned up so that we'll have a contiguous property, and DPW supports it.
Thank you. Are there any questions, discussion? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. This article passes. There will be no action taken on Article Seventeen, because there was a recall provision voted in with the Charter. So, there is no other business coming before the town meeting? Before I act on the motion to adjourn, so East Long Meadow is undertaking a new form of government, which will take effect on July first. There will be seven town councilors who will be elected on June seventh. I urge everyone in the audience to take advantage of the opportunity to go and vote on June seventh. And I'd just like to leave you with one quote. The last president elected from Massachusetts was John Kennedy. He had a very famous quote, and I'm going to use it for East Long Meadow. Not ask what East Long Meadow can do for you, but ask what you can do for East Long Meadow. So, I ask that all of you stay involved, serve on committees, pay attention, because democracy is only as good as the people who are involved in it, and the people who are diligent and watch over it. So, we have a motion to adjourn, it's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.